Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting. Our first meeting in April. I hope everyone enjoyed their Easter holiday yesterday. The weather has been delightful and grateful. I tell you, we've got a warm streak that's really happening right now. If you didn't get out this weekend and enjoy some of it, I mean, it's just been really beautiful. But there's been a downside. You've got that pollen you've got to deal with. It's still there. So, you know, one comes with the other. Some will call a meeting to order. Please stand for invocation and please remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm reminded of a scripture in our Bible. Psalms 91:1. "He that dwells in the secret place of the Most High shall abide under the shadow of Almighty. I will say of the Lord he is my refuge, my fortress, my God, and him will I trust." Council members, trust in God. And you'll do great. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this hour. God, we ask you to bless these council members. Bless the mayor, oh God. Touch him from the crown of his head to the soles of his feet. And impart in our mayor, God, grace, goodness, and mercy. And do the same for our board members, oh God. God, remember our police officers, oh God. Keep them safe, oh God. For they're in the service of the town. God, remember rec services and employees that keep the town running, oh God. Bless them indeed, oh Father. And God, we thank you for the citizens of this great town, oh God. The town of Hope Mills, oh God. Keep us safe and keep us blessed. And Christ may we pray. Amen.
Let's thank our Haitian colors. A scout will come forward to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be saved. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have additions or deletions that we want to add to tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add under Presentations, item C, one-year anniversary letter for Kingdom Builders Community Church. And under New Business, item D, discussion of the Historic Preservation, change it to Historic Preservation Commission. And item E, removal of Veteran Affairs Committee members.
Okay. We've got three items we're adding. One under Presentations, item C, one-year anniversary letter. Under New Business, we've got item D, discussion of Historic Preservation Committee. And item E, Veterans Affairs members are removed. Second, can motion, is there a motion? Oh, got another one. Okay.
I have under New Business, where the Supreme Court ruling for social media.
Under New Business, that will be item F, the recent Supreme Court ruling about social media will be a discussion about that ruling in that case. So, with those additions to tonight's agenda, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries. Next, we have official comments. I will start with Commissioner Swole.
Since it's April 2nd today, I thought I would, you know, give a shout out to everyone in the audience. I appreciate everyone being here. Hold on, let me have to fix my microphone. I greatly appreciate our citizens that come to our meetings. It's very important when our citizens get involved in our politics. Thank you, everyone, for being here. That was my mayor.
Ms. Wann?
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to thank everyone who came out tonight. I hope you all had a wonderful Easter and you had it for the reason it's called Easter. I'd also like to thank the pastors, the scouts, and our town staff for the work that they do and their donation of time. Thank you, my mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. Commissioner Gray?
I just want to bring up what a wonderful time it was at the community sunrise service on Sunday. The ministerial association, I think we had like seven or eight ministers that took part. Also, the Grace team from the Grace Creek Church of God had a wonderful, wonderful singing. So, I just wanted to thank God that we were offered that service on Sunday and thank you all very much. Please all be grateful.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray?
I'd just like to thank the staff and the community volunteers that participated in the dignity closet. I heard it went really well. And the event that you all put on two weeks ago for the, for Easter, I heard that went really well as well. And I did not attend the service on yesterday, but I also heard about this. So, I'd just like to thank all of the pastors and the churches and the community that participated in that service on yesterday. That's not that I had.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Dr. McCray? I also would like to, I also would like to go out to have a big shout out for yesterday's community sunrise service. It was probably one of the largest crowds of people that we have had at the lake park in a number of years. And I'm not saying that because I was there. I'm saying it because that's what the pastors were saying that were there, that were part of it. And it was a large crowd of people that came. I want to talk about a little something about the Easter event a couple of weeks ago that was in the rec center. On a day that the weather just wasn't really great for an outside, traditional Easter egg hunt like we usually have done in the past. The weather wasn't all that great. I will tell you that our Parks and Rec staff really hit a home run with what they did on the inside of the building at the rec center. The comments from families, parents, kids, and I mean, it just was all day comments. And they were all, of course, everyone said, I wish the weather was better. Wish we could have done something outside, but we didn't. And that's okay because everyone understood the weather had some direct impact. But the main thing that came from that was family oriented. And you had to have been there to feel it, to witness it, to hear it, to be part of it. And for folks to make comments about that event that weren't there. I'll say that. That weren't there. You really can't make comments about something if you're not there, if you can't be part of it. It's like yesterday morning. The same thing would be a few weeks ago last month when we had the senior expo here. That was another home run event by our town staff in the Parks and Rec Department. And I think today's an interesting day for our Parks and Rec director, Lamarko Morrison, because I think the first of April is when he came to our town.
Oh, I remember. I thought I talked about that.
Today's an interesting day because he started with our town the first of April. And I think I got the right years, 2020, right, Lamarko?
2019.
2019. I say, that was a little close. That's how long he's been here. But it's a testament of the team and the staff working together in concert. So, I've got a little quote that my wife wanted me to read tonight. Let me pull it up here. Get it to work. From Amy Weathered, "Some people could be given an entire field of roses and only see the thorns in it. Others could be given a single weed and only see the wildflower in it. Perception is a key component to gratitude and gratitude a key component to joy." And I just wanted to share that. Those are all the comments that I have. Before we get into Presentations, I have a comment to read about another outstanding event that has already been discussed already, about the first annual dignity closet event. Before we move into Presentations, I just wanted to take a moment to reflect on a profound day that impacted the lives of so many here in Hope Mills. Again, you had to have been here to be part of it. And I know you, you were part of it, Commissioner, throughout the day. Commissioner Swole, I know you were part of it. We started, what started as just an idea in January by our town clerk, Miss Ashley White, and that's exactly where it came from. And our Hope Mills Police Department, victim's advocate Jamie Glisson, together turned out something larger than life. Last Thursday, March 28th, the dignity closet created an inviting space for women in need to come and shop. No questions were asked. And most importantly, it was a free event, a fellowship. Our staff worked tirelessly. And for what I must commend them and thank them, to the Public Works leadership, Don Sisco and Bruce Clark, and I think both over here. Big shout out to both of you. Thank you for all the hard work and for allowing your staff to assist with this impactful event. To Stephen Kissinger, Carl Hinders, Leon Wallace, Don Hefkoff. If I mispronounce a name, please. I'm not good at names, but Greg Williams, Rich Haddelman. Oh, God, I'm going to spell this one. K-H-L, no, K-H-A-L-H-L. Thank you. We thank you for what I hear Public Works was the muscle that made the event happen. That is true. Because it's always the behind the scenes that make the front stage shine. And anything that's happened. To the Parks and Rec Director, Lamarko Morrison, who's been here since 2019, one April. The event would not have been possible without the use of your facility and the help of your all-star staff. Well, you know, he's got an all-star staff. But you want to know something else? Our town manager, Chancellor McGlocklin, he's got an all-star staff too. Yes. Ms. Brenda Williams, Megan Mears, Megan Hawkins, and Maxie Dove, thank you. And let me tell you, these folks were behind the Easter event as well. Completely behind that too. In changing, as the weather was coming in, it wasn't going to be nice. It wasn't going to be favorable. We know we're going to move it inside. And they were behind the entire event. To our town staff, Drew Holland, Beth Brown, Janice Smith, Emily Wilder, Karonda Reagan, Bobby Carter, Matt Kane, David Arthur, Tyler Riddle, thank you for all that you did for the dignity closet and all that you do on a daily basis. And some of you are back there on the back wall. And thank you again. From handling boxes of odor, soliciting clothing racks to hang in clothes on hangers, the dignity closet showed that this was an all hands on deck event for our community. To our town manager, Chancellor McGlocklin, and my commissioner colleagues, Mayor Pro Tem, Dr. McCray, Commissioner Swole, yes. It's clear that your commitment to service by leading by example was demonstrated with this event, hopefully future events to come. Now, let's get to our partners, the Women's Veteran Interactive Foundation, PWC of Fayetteville, Fayetteville Chapter of Jack and Jill of America, for Liberty Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta, Delta Chapter of Delta... I know I'm not going to get it. Yes, thank you. Navy Federal Credit Union on Skyboro Road, Goodwill Industries of Eastern North Carolina, Unilever of Rafer, Kate Toast Fashion Clothes Store right here in Hope Mills. Thank you for believing in our vision and supporting us. And lastly, to all of the volunteers and residents, the outpouring of contributions to this amazing cause was truly incredible to see. We have siblings and even spouses of staff members coming in over the course of several weeks to sort through every single piece of clothing to ensure it met our quality standards. It was that important to us that we had displayed and reflected the true character of Hope Mills and that our event was done with dignity. All in all, we serviced more than 105 women on that day. To anyone or any entity that may have been forgotten, we thank you as well. And I am happy to put everyone's concerns at ease by letting the public know tonight that our dynamic team is already preparing for the second annual dignity closet. Please give a round of applause for our outstanding team, Hope Mills. Ashley, is the second annual, is that going to be another one in the fall?
We're looking at the same timeframe for next year, but we're also considering other events possibly later in the fall.
All righty. Next item on the agenda is Presentations, National Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation. That's a long proclamation. So, here we go. Town of Hope Mills, North Carolina Proclamation, National Child Abuse Prevention Month. And it starts today, by the way. The month of April starts today. Tomorrow, we have the spin wheels, I think, at noon, right Chancellor?
Yes.
That event kicking off at noon tomorrow. Whereas every year, reports are made to child protective services. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community and finding solutions requires involvement and action from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Hope Mills. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, physiological, emotional, and physical effects of having lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors or conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional development, well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that create strong, thriving children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribution to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jesse Bellflowers, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the town of Hope Mills and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving quality of life for all children and families. Our next proclamation started with a reach out from our local Kiwanis Club coming from the chair of that club, former Commissioner Greeley Mitchell. And we are declaring March 23rd, 2024 as Key Club International Day Proclamation. Whereas Key Club International is the oldest and largest service program for high school students. It is a student-led organization that teaches leadership through service to others. It was established in Sacramento in 1925. Members of the Kiwanis International family, Key Club members built themselves as they build their schools and communities. And whereas Key Club International is sponsored by Kiwanis International and is the largest high school service organization in the world and is a nonprofit organization of student leaders committed to providing service to the world, their home community, and schools. And whereas in 2024, Key Club International celebrates its 99th year of service and is part of an international organization of more than 260,000 high school students, more than 5,000 clubs. And Key Club is represented in 30 countries dedicated to serve a purpose for their schools and communities seeking supremacy to human and spiritual rather than the material values of life. And whereas Key Clubs, in partnership with their local Kiwanis Club, remains true to its mission and core values by providing members with opportunities to serve, build character, develop heart, develop leadership, and provide the opportunity to give back to their community through charitable works and community service while developing competent, capable, and caring leaders since 1925. And whereas the Hope Mills Kiwanis Club sponsors the Key Clubs at Southview and Jack Brent High Schools that teach high school students the importance of community service by answering the call to lead, summoning the courage to engage, and developing the heart to serve with a positive impact on our community and citizens. And now, therefore, I, Jesse Bellflowers, mayor of the town of Hope Mills, do hereby proclaim March 23rd, 2024, as Key Club International Day. Ashley and I, the town clerk Ashley White and I, put this together because we haven't had one as a template before. So, I'm here to tell you, she is amazing when she puts something together. And I'm proud to read this on behalf of the Key Club. These were presented during the recent Kiwanis meeting. The proclamation was presented to each of the high schools and that was really, really received well. Our next proclamation, which is a proclamation, it is a one-year anniversary level letter for Kingdom Builders Community Church. I'm going to read it and then I'm going to present it down front. "Dated March 26, 2024, Dear Pastor Goodman, On behalf of the Board of Commissioners in the town of Hope Mills, we would like to extend our heartfelt congratulations on the one-year anniversary of your church. Kingdom Builders Community Church, Hope Mills, has continuously been making strides in the community through its annual community Easter outreach dinner, community baptism, and hosting the Bread of Life Conference, which brings economic impact to the city and provides free empowerment for leaders and business folk naturally and spiritually. We, as a community, are excited to see what is in store for the upcoming year and for years to come in Hope Mills. Thank you for all that you do and congratulations again on being an inspiration to our community and clergy alike. And if you would like to come up, I'll present this letter to you. Dr. McCray sent us an email asking us if we could put together a letter to recognize your one-year anniversary. And again, I'm here to tell you, don't thank me. I just read it. You got to thank her and especially you got to thank Ashley White. She packaged this up so we could put this together for you.
After everything that you do for our community.
Are you going to add into the list, um, pass it away to some Friday?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Rotation.
Did you even picture the quality of the art? I don't have any cameras.
Thank you all again. I'm reminded of the latter clause of John 10:10. It says, "I came that you might have life and have it more abundantly." Truly Hope Mills, since moving here from West Virginia, has been a representation of life and life more abundantly for me and my family. Transferred here because of my company, Chick-fil-A. The company moved me here to Hope Mills. And we're a part of a church planning network called Bread of Life. And then as the time passed, our children went to school here. One graduated from Southview. He has a bachelor's in psychology now, doing great things. Our daughter currently is a cheerleader at Southview, doing amazing things. We just saw the abundant life in this community and we just wanted to add value. So, thank you all for allowing us to be here, to serve here. We look forward to being here for many years to come. Thank you all.
Again, thank you very much.
I would like to take this time to invite everyone to Marrow Park across the street on April the 13th for opening day of baseball and softball in Hope Mills. And people in the public are going to have to ask for your help too. You don't need a dime to get in. It's all free. It's all put together by Lamarko and his staff. Again, thank you. I haven't missed one of these and can't remember. It's been a long time since I missed one of these opening days. And I look forward to being at this one again. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. I'm sure that you'll be there for this one.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to be a big event for our community. It really is. It is every year. It's going to be a big event again, again this year. We just pray that the weather will work with us, that it'll be a nice day like it has been this weekend for the kids. Next on the agenda is public comments. I don't believe we have anybody signed up for public comments tonight. From there, we'll jump into the consent agenda. First item is consideration of approval of the Board of Commissioners' March 4 regular meeting minutes and March 7. Special Budget Retreat Minutes, meeting minutes, that's tab 3. John, thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming before you guys go. Consideration of Approval of the Board of Commissioners' Close Session Minutes, January 8, 2024, January 22, 2024, and February 5, 2024. There are no attachments. Acceptance of Monthly Financial Report for February 2024. That would be tab 4. That's the end of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Stand unopposed. Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Uh, there are no old business items under new business. We go to item A, reappointment of Cynthia Hamilton and Maureen McLean to the Board of Adjustment for two-year terms and that's under tab five. Yes, Marion, sorry.
I think the motion that we have moved Cynthia Hamilton and Marion to the Board of Adjustments for a two-year term for the support of the foundation.
Any motion? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. No one opposed? Motion carries. Next item B, consideration of approval for the street acceptance policy tab five. This one belongs to you, Town Manager, Chancellor of the Board.
Um, I, it's Don, uh, Bruce to come up, but the history behind this is, um, over time when we are going through, uh, development of residential communities and streets, there is a process where those streets ultimately become streets that we own and maintain. And throughout the last couple of years, we found some areas that we need to fine tune in our street acceptance policies, standard suspects and things of that nature. So some of the ordinance amendments that we have coming through the zoning department and the subdivision orders are tied to this as well. But Don and Bruce and his crew felt it was, um, it was something we needed to formally establish an entire policy that speaks to this process that we currently have. I'll turn over to Don.
Open the floor for any questions. I mean, Tension pretty much covered the history on it, you know, from when I came here ten years ago, we didn't have anything for accepting any type of infrastructure. We developed the standards specs and now we are fine tuning it, um, trying to do that continuous improvement and making it better so that we continue to get a, a better product for the town. Any discussion or any questions from the board before we talk to the vote?
Mayor, I have seen the street department out recently.
Uh, I've seen the street department out quite a bit lately, working on the streets, patching cracks and replacing chunks of asphalt. Don? Give me my, okay, give me my sense, okay.
We'll do.
Nothing even there, but.
Well, you know, we always pass on to our crews. We get more folks, words of appreciation and new complaints in our department, which is kind of surprising for what we do for a living. But we make sure that we pass it on to the guys that are actually out there doing it, uh, help them understand or let them know that, that they are appreciated, but not just those of us that have worked with them, but the residents that they work for.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Legan. One of the key parts of the acceptance of the street acceptance policy is that this is a policy that will go into effect once we approve it. And it's also on the front end of any development that occurs in Hope Mills. Is that a lot of times builders will come in, put the streets in. Once the building is complete, the builders leave and the streets remain. So this is an opportunity to look at the front end of neighborhoods, the front end of, of roads and streets in Hope Mills where they look good in the first one or two years, but we want them to look good twenty years after the first one or two years. And I think that's what the strength of this policy represents and that's why it's needed. It is, and you know, one thing that folks really don't pay attention to unless there's a pothole. We own the streets and that is a town asset. We've got roughly close to forty million dollars in our roadway system right now. That's a lot of money in a roadway system that gets people to working back every day.
Mayor, how many, either three miles do we have now?
We have, how many of the DOT roadways, I believe it's close to eighty-three miles.
Eighty-three? That's a lot of miles to be inside of a city center.
Eighty-three and gone. Okay.
Just for click, sorry, just for clarification issues, in the packet, um, it says new business A with the Board of Adjustments, that is tab four. Tab five is the street acceptance policy. So if you look at the packets, number a little weird. Some of the stuff is under six, I think. Yeah. It's stapled weird, I think. Cause that's why if you look under here, it's number six, but it's really.
Oh, the tabs are, I'm amazed it got in.
So just wanted a little clarification.
Thank you, Commissioner Sola. Do we, uh, do we have a motion to approve the street acceptance policy? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing no one opposed, motion carries. Next item is C. Thank you, Don, and thank you and your team for what, for everything that you guys do for our town. To receive, uh, the next item to see, should receive an update on the relocation of the tennis, tennis courts, pickleball courts to the Golf View Greenway. Consideration of, of appropriating four hundred and sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars in ARPA funds for the design and development for a new tennis court and pickleball complex at the Golf View Greenway and approved corresponding budget amendment number twenty-one. And this item will belong to our Parks and Direct, Director Lamarko Morrison. Tim?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Board of Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. Um, at the March sixth, Board of Commissioners', Budget Retreat, you all received a report on the relocation of the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. And at that time, we wanted direction on, uh, where to go next with the project, whether to move into, um, design and construction. Um, but we got direction to meet with representatives from Department of Transportation just to confirm that, um, putting the facility out there will not trigger anything related to, um, turning signals, roadway improvements, et cetera. And so on March fifteenth, we did meet with DOT and we got that confirmation that there would not be any, um, additional requires, requirements from us if we did put in this particular facility, just a pickleball court. Uh, however, we do have to submit a application for, um, a permanent permit for the, uh, the temporary parking lot, which we are working on now. And so with that, um, staff recommends that, um, the board allow us to move forward with the design portion uh, of the tennis courts and pickleball court complex. Um, only because, um, construction might take a little while because we found out from the inspections, the chief building inspector, that restrooms would be required and utilities, it's gonna be a challenge until, um, at what point utilities is brought closer for us to be able to connect to it and, um, and do a type. And so, um, us knowing that it's gonna be probably a year in the making before we get access to utilities, uh, we recommend moving forward with the design and possibly the schematic design for the senior center in general and have those plans ready for, um, for the installation of the tennis courts and the pickleball complex.
Thank you, Lamarko.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with that.
Okay. Commissioner Legan's made a motion. Mr. Craver, Commissioner Craver's made a second. Any discussion about this before we move forward, Commissioner Martin?
So the, um, just, just for clarification, the four sixty-seven nine hundred budget minute, number twenty-one, is that for the design and construction?
It is.
Of the tennis court?
Tennis court.
Or is that just for the design of the tennis, the pickleball and the senior?
So we have a separate, if we have a separate amendment that we've already done with the engineer to update the entire plan because we wanna know how the pickleball, um, course and the senior center is going to, um, tie into or fit in with the sports complex. So we didn't wanna lose sight of that. So that's one amendment that we've already, um, we've already approved, it's like twelve thousand dollars. And that's within the town manager's, um, um, ability to sign off on. So we've already got that in place because the board did say they wanted updated, uh, site plan so that we can bring that back to approval. But this particular contract is solely for the pickleball complex, restrooms and utilities tied to the complex.
Uh, yeah, I, I know we, we briefly discussed it at the budget retreat, I think that, uh, but that is, that is the coverage of the design, infrastructure, everything for tennis and pickleball. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Any other comments from the board? Wanna add a couple. In the current, uh, proposed budget for next year, the restriping and maintenance of the existing tennis courts was close to sixty thousand dollars proposed. I believe that is correct. And those tennis courts are located here in, in the, in the municipal park. And a lot of folks don't know those tennis courts are there. So instead of investing sixty thousand dollars into just two tennis courts where Public Works really needs that space for the expansion. One of the easiest ways to look at this was to, again, listening to the citizens of our town tell us that pickleball is a new sport that is, that is up and coming. This was be an opportunity to, to move the tennis courts, not two of them, four of them. There will be four on the golf course and it will be striped with pickleball so they can, so we can have pickleball tournaments, pickleball games along with tennis courts, along with the pavilion and bathrooms and a picnic table, uh, setup, I think, and some benches. So the four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars is a comprehensive package. But nonetheless, in the past few months, if you listen to more and more citizens, especially at, at Easter, at that Easter function, at the senior expo function, more and more citizens are looking at family-oriented events along with seniors looking at pickleball. Now, I haven't played pickleball. I, I, it's, I don't have the paddles, but it's something that I'm gonna jump into. It seems like it's a sport that's up and coming. But the main part of what we're doing here is that we're, we're looking at establishing some, an opportunity on the golf course to go after some, some money in the future budget years to support the community senior citizen thing that's proposed there. And that's the other, uh, item that a lot of people have talked about because Lamarko, your current facility is just outrunning itself. And if, and if you come to these town events, you will see that our current facilities have clearly outrun the buildings that we have. During our legislative delegates meeting, and we've had several of these up until where we are now. For future funding for our projects, you know what they told us? Have something that's shovel-ready, designed ready to go. And that is what we're doing tonight. It's on the front end, we're starting to identify and reappropriate funding to design and have projects shovel-ready to go. So when there are monies that are available from state and federal, we can pick up the phone and Lamarko can say, I've got one ready to go right now. Doesn't need to go through any process, it's ready to go. We just need the funding to do it. So with that said, we, go ahead.
When I was at the, um, helping with the dignity closet, were they playing pickleball in the gym?
They were.
They were, yeah. Yeah, I, I got to see it firsthand. It was, it looked pretty cool. I'm a bad hit, but it was pretty cool.
So are you saying that Easter Bunny got to witness, uh, pickleball?
No, 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 I was volunteering at the dignity.
Ah, okay.
I, I, the Easter Bunny was not able to see the pickleball.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion carries. You got your money, Lamarko. Next item is the addition, one of two. Item D, discussion of Historic Preservation Committee, HBC, changing to Historic Preservation Commission. HBC review the suggested HBC ordinance amendment number twenty twenty-three and it's a blank and has the document attachment. This item was added. I added this item myself today to the agenda and the chair is here tonight. And Sharon reads for any discussion that the board may have about the future of the HBC and why it's important to go back from a committee, go back to a commission. So Sharon, would you like to come up to the mic?
Sure. Can I, can I say something? Yes, please do. I, so I was one of the people that voted against this two years ago. So I, I would like to know what has changed for you all to bring it back, come to the back on the agenda again tonight.
Well, I think that we've become more involved with the community. Sorry, I've got really bad allergies and I'm getting on the foot. We've become more involved with the community. Um, we've done a couple of historic projects with the park recreation. Um, we are trying to do more things out in the community, trying to do more things that align more with our objectives as the Historic Preservation Committee with the cemetery project and things like that. So, I mean, we've worked really hard the last two years and tried to go on to things that I think would be beneficial. So that's why I think I've discussed some things with, with other people, with the mayor and, and with some of the commissioners about perhaps it's time to revisit because not only is it good, I mean, I remember when it was taken away and I spoke Christine Rantley up at the H, the, the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office and, um, she was like, man, she said, I can't believe that you're very commissioned. She said, the commission is like the jewel and the crown of, of, of your, you know, committees. It's a real asset to your community and it is, if you look all up, if we get CLG certified and get the commission, we're open to state wide funding for different projects, we're open to federal funding for various things. I mean, some people say we don't have history in this town, but that's just not so. We have our own little pocket of history and everything has history. You have history, I have history. But yes, there is history in this town and I think that we can work together, um, with the board, with Parks and Rec and other departments and, um, really make that a prominent thing. Um, you've got parks and, and, and places all over, we have over a hundred commissions here, um, in North Carolina. So I don't see why Hope Mills isn't ready to become a commission again. Sorry, stuff like this.
To, to add to that, I pulled the minutes from June fifteenth, twenty twenty. And the discussion, the possible action on the Historic Preservation Commission changing to a committee. Town Manager Adams commented, due to the difficulty of attracting members in a town of our size, it is recommended that the Historic Preservation Commission be designated a committee. So at that point, four years ago, almost four years ago, it looked, at that time, the committee didn't have a lot of, of members, whereas today you have five active members.
Five and I'm, I'm romancing another one, not, not, that, I mean.
Not literally.
Not literally romancing, but trying to get someone else on board, yes.
Are you looking to go back to, uh, to a commission to satisfy the certi, the certified local government, the CLG?
Well, yes, I mean, that's a big part of it because once you get that certified local government, sort of, I mean, you get the certification, that just opens you up to so many opportunities. You know, for grants and other things and, and development projects, renovation projects for downtown. I was looking at the, the Main Street project, I don't know if you're familiar with it, revitalizing downtown areas here in North Carolina. Um, so yes, that's kind of a part of it is having the opportunity. We, we, we can't effectively pursue any kind of grants or anything now with the status that we're in as a committee.
And, and if you, to go back to a commission, how would that look with your committee? I mean, you've got five active members now.
We have five active members and one, I, I think is gonna join.
And will they continue to be active on the commission going forward?
Yes, sir, I believe so. And if I may add, I mean, I'm just going to be braggadocious here, but I mean, of all the committees, we probably, because I pulled all this stuff, the resume and the top of my measures. We have four people with master's degrees. We have, um, I mean, just, and no, we're not architects, we're archaeologists. But I mean, just, I went to Duke, and let me tell you something, if you want to get to Duke, you have to know how to research, okay? If you want to get a master's from Duke, you have to understand research and where to go and how to get stuff. And all of us are just really educated, we're really passionate about history. We're passionate about keeping that and preserving it. So I think we have really, and not to doubt, because I think all the committees are great. Want to say we have a very, very, uh, passionate committee right now, and we have a passionate commission, if, if that were granted to us.
Yeah. So I was on the nominating committee at that time. And I recall was it was not a matter of never being active, it's the requirements that the members have to have to be on that committee. And I understand that you all have master's degrees, but I can't recall all of them because we didn't get the email until today. It was going to be on the agenda tonight, but one of them was a volunteer, one of them was someone that had.
My third.
Uh, yeah, so that, there's, so it wasn't a matter of being active, it was a matter of people having a different correct certification they needed for it to remain a commission, is what I recall.
Well, I mean, the state NCHPO's recommends, it's a recommendation, it's a guideline, they'd love to, yes. If we were in Greensboro, where I grew up, or Charleston, or Charlotte, you have people, all these architects and archaeologists. I hate to say it, we're in Mills, we're kind of short in archaeology department and, you know, things like that. But, you know, who knows, maybe later on, with the MIA program and whatnot, we can attract some people from nearby areas that would be interested, that have these credentials. But the main thing that states for the NC, NCFHPO is that the members should have a great deal of enthusiasm, passion, and dedication towards the preservation of historical communities, historical buildings, and history in general.
I'll, I'll just clarify, the, the statute that allows us to create a commission in one sixty B three oh three specifically states, um, that a majority of the members of the commission shall have demonstrated special interest, experience, or education with history, architecture, archaeology, whatever it takes. So that's the statute.
But you also have access to architects, don't you, and real estate people?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I mean, I have, even though Alice, like, for example, Alice, I didn't know her committee, I called upon her three or four times to look up deeds for us, you know, old records and things. Um, I worked with a, a guy out of, out in Broke on some of the history and the marching of Sherman and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, if, if you can write an email or make a phone call, you have access to resources. And we've got a really knowledgeable, we've got three or four people here in town that are really knowledgeable, but our town historian, Meredith, she's lived here since the fifties. And she could tell you anything about Mississippi buildings, same with Roy Young. Roy will go down the street, oh, yeah, I remember when this was, such and such, and then, and he knows what everything was. And even I didn't know what some of the buildings were, and he would go, no, 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 you got that wrong. This is where this was, this is what was that, he knows. So, yeah, he does, he really does. So I'm, I'm enthral, I'm, I'm thrilled about that.
Going forward, I, I, I know the, the, your committee, HPC, is actively involved in crafting and writing storyboards for Heritage Park.
Yes, sir.
I know that's a pretty big endeavor as we go forward with, uh, with preserving history and highlighting history. Heritage Park is one of the projects that's ongoing now.
Yes, sir.
What other projects would the HPC be involved in besides Heritage Park?
Well, we want to start our cemetery cleaning as former, our cemetery cleaning and restoration. Um, not just for county cemetery, but also for McRae, which is such a state of disrepair. Um, I was, I was, and I had to talk to you, Lamarcos, I was going to need to show up at the committee, the committee meeting. But there, um, there's this thing that they have at Lake Lourdes that I happened to go to and see a couple of weeks ago, um, that I'd like to see incorporated into Heritage Park, it's Rainbow Bridge. You know, the story of the Rainbow Bridge and your pets nuts over and they're waiting for it to end. And this lady, she donated all this money, maybe also a little bridge, Rainbow Bridge, and people come, literally. I mean, there were, people were all over the state. And they hang their deceased's collars and whatnot on the bridge, just to commemorate this. Is there anything new to history? No. But if you want to attract people in this town, you've got to give them a reason to come. If you want to attract them to the park, you've got a reason, you've got to give them some reasons. Hey, I want to go there, ma'am, I want to see that Rainbow Bridge, I want to go see where those radial arm dam, uh, arm, little, I keep talking, I'm sorry. Radium dam gates are, what do they look like, what did they do? I mean, stuff like that, people, you've got to pique people's interests.
Hello, I'm Karen Sarrazin. Um, I'm also on the, uh, HPC. And one of the things that I'm also passionate about is utilizing the historical chapel as a wedding chapel. Um, many, many, many citizens in Cumberland County go to the jail to get married. When we have a beautiful chapel right here, and we, we, we're going to our first wedding in October. Well, not first, but it's been renovated. Because that was one of the purposes for events, for weddings, for receptions. For receptions, I'm really not too sure. For elogements, instead of going to the jail and going through a metal detector and waiting for a magistrate, um, to marry you, you could have a beautiful little elogement at the chapel and bring people into the town to see a historical chapel, to see the historical area. And that, that's something that I'm passionate about, actually, and that I want today.
Thank you very much. You know, I heard from residents again this past month, how we, the residents would like to see a farmer's market come somewhere in Oak Mills. And you know, you, you look at that green area that's down there on Trade Street, and maybe that would be an opportunity for an area for a farmer's market. Just, just some ideas that, that citizens bring up about different events that they would like to sit, and I was just adding that to, to the wedding at the chapel.
Mayor.
Yep, oh, yeah, Commissioner Marley.
You know, Mar, uh, just a comment, um, right now I'm the liaison to the HPC and I kind of find it funny that I knew nothing about any of this, it was not brought to me as the liaison, which is fine that it was, um, but if it's so important, it's such a big thing, I don't know why it wasn't mentioned, mentioned the minute I found out about it and nobody else found out about it today in the email. And that was the first I heard of it, so. My recommendation at this time, I'd like to have more information on it. I, I too was on the board there. The manager came, said it was a bad thing, we need to do away with commissions across the board in the town, that they didn't need to be in the commission. As Dr. McCray said, I was on that board, we wanted to do away with the commissions. Um, I understand their reasoning, I heard what everybody said, but for me, I would like to see the board table this. I don't think we need to make a decision on this tonight. I'd like to get some more information because if it was a bad thing, then how's it a good thing? So I, I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm not saying I'm for it. Um, I, I need more information, I need more time getting an email at twelve o'clock and then adding an item to the agenda that nobody knew about, nobody's had any time to look at it, think about it, discuss, or to get research on. I think it's a knee jerk reaction and I don't think we take that issue out of the board. Done, sir.
All right. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I, I was a lead on on that committee for a while. And some of the, the ladies that worked on, on that committee are volunteers and they're very well educated in the fields that they're, that the committee requires and they have. And I don't remember all those committees, but, uh, I can't change anything by myself. But I can understand why they want to be, uh, aligned with themselves. But I will, I want Mr. Marley to get more information as possible.
Okay, Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Craver?
Well, first of all, they not go beyond the line by themselves, since I remember the appearance commission, the backdoor commission. Uh, so the HPC is not just, would be by itself. Another thing is, as a commission, and when we do get our CLG certification, we are opened up to a lot more grants. I'd love to see the HPC would have, uh, um, more control and over our historic district. As far as if you look at Lockmount area, small town, has done by being a commission and having their CLG, they have gone in there and taken like, like the, the buildings on Trade Street now. They have redone the whole front of it and they've got shops all in there now. And, um, it would also, I think, give you the right to be able to, if you wanted to put colors, have the colors of that the buildings could be painted. You could also be able to go to the homes around there and say, look, we'd like you to clean this up. Uh, but I think that most of you are looking at this in the wrong way. Maybe we do need to postpone it till the next meeting, but I don't know that you'll see it any differently than you do right now. You're looking at it as a name, a committee or a commission, and that's not what this is about.
Thanks, Commissioner Craver, and Mr. Waller.
See, and this is where I, I don't understand enough about, and I, I've told that to you, Sharon, that I, I still don't understand the end and end, like you were speaking of, you know, painting buildings to compose and stuff like that. I don't, I don't understand how that stuff works, and that's where I have to under, you know, read up more on it because I don't know, like, how were those requirements, how can you approach, like, for example, Trade Street, it's privately owned. How can you dictate to a privately owned business kind of thing? That's, I don't understand how those things work.
Well, you probably make it get a, a grant that, where we could buy those buildings.
Okay.
And that's what I'm obviously seeing happen.
I can get some clarity on that too, because the, one of the big differences between a committee and a commission is if you have a historic district in place, the commission is obligated to give a certificate of appropriateness for any exterior renovation. Um, which would require anyone who owns property in the historic district to go before the commission and act, sort of ask permission to make the change. And then the commission could say, well, you know, it needs to be this color, it needs to be this height, it needs to be this. Yeah, so they have a lot more discretion, it's, it'd be sort of making them a quasi judicial board, sort of akin to the Board of Adjustments, so that when a property owner wants to make a renovation in the historic district, they have to go to the commission and essentially get approval to do that. And the commission has the authority to impose certain conditions, including things like it has to be this color or it has, you know, whatever. We would have to, in order to have a historic district officially established with the commission controls, you'd have to come up with a defined list of characteristics of the historic district so that the commission could have some guidelines as to what requirements need to be in place for renovation. So they, they would have a lot more authority to dictate what you could and couldn't do in the historic district, given that they would need to get a certificate of appropriateness to, to proceed. That's how that would work.
And I'll chime in as well, um, when I was the liaison, we did establish the rules procedure. We did establish, uh, what the state suggested is when you're actually in the process of developing the extensive guidelines. They had generic guidelines that they wanted us to actually adopt, which were done. I think, uh, what makes the commission, this commission, a little bit different, and regular commissions would be that governing authority that's granted for the approval of exterior or any type of additional construction within that district. I think that's what makes, I think, a lot of the, uh, the community service stuff, I think that's very powerful and formidable. But I think that's the certificate of appropriateness aspect and the governing authority, um, over the, the construction of exterior changes to buildings in the district. I think that's what typically makes this a little different in terms of, uh, the powers that are granted.
So just for a quick follow-up question, so like, okay, so for example, you got the Chamber of Commerce, okay? Currently, wherever stated sin, um, would that make, like, would the, say you were to become a commission, would you be able to go like, okay, you have an outside window unit that has to change immediately? Or there, is there a grandfather clause kind of thing?
I think it's triggered by a request to make exterior, significant material alterations. So if you needed to, you know, change out a window pane or something, that's probably not something that would trigger that. But if you wanted to get a new door, that would.
See, then this is where I need to get more information because I, I really am lost.
Okay, it sounds like the board, the consensus is to table the, this issue and bring it back next meeting, is that the consensus? It sounds like that's the consensus, is to have it on the April fifteenth agenda. Uh, and then we also, I, I also need to have the process, uh, that will be included as well. Because I believe there's a process, if I'm not wrong, uh, Chancellor Dan.
Yes, typically, um, because a lot of this goes through the zoning department. So when we established the historic district, we did it by ordinance through the planning board and zone department. If you're talking about issuance of certificates of appropriateness, that is typically done. So let's say someone actually approaches the zone department for a zone permit to do an addition to ours. The zone department is not authorized if this commission is established. The zone department is not authorized to grant that approval until they go through the commission to get that certificate of appropriateness, which is granted after an analysis of the guidelines that are established. If the commission approves that certificate of appropriateness, then that certificate is put in the zoning permit when they're submitting it to the bill, uh, the building department for permits. So those are processes once it's established. Um, what I was initially stating was if we're talking about an amendment to the ordinance, we typically do have to do a series of work sessions, like when we did the, um, the overlay district while we're doing the zoning ordinance. What that allows us to do is it allows the people requesting the changes to actually speak to, this is the trend, trends that are, uh, moving us to be able to make these changes. These are some of the changes we're talking about doing. That's where some of the understanding comes into play. Um, I think we're getting clarification on it, is they have to go through the planning board and come back, um, to the board for consideration. That's the process I'm talking about as well. Um, another thing I would like to see is, um, a lot of training, um, I think we can put that in the budget. Um, what that training does, it allows us to have a clearer understanding between what is the difference between, uh, a district designation on the, uh, list of historic places versus a landmark building designation, I think that's some confusion on that. Um, I do think that, um, the, um, state historic preservation office does actually allow or provide a significant amount of resources for training. I think it also helps if there's a plan of action that says, hey, this is what we're looking for with the CLG, but these are the specific projects we're going to work towards, um, and things that make, I think that will give you the clarification that you want.
Thank you, Chancellor, and, and I think we have an excellent opportunity coming up because your next HPC meeting is April tenth.
Yes, sir.
That would be an excellent opportunity to discuss this, uh, this agenda item prior to our next board meeting, which is April fifteenth. And, and Chancellor, if you would, uh, attend that HPC meeting and steer that conversation, that would be most helpful to the entire, uh, committee incoming when the information comes back. Uh, as everyone knows, I'm programmed, I am all about grants, Chancellor, you know, you know that. And I think grant funding on any project that we can, that we can locate and find, we should jump on every opportunity that is available to us. And every committee, every commission has an opportunity for grant funding of projects. So that's where I see that added value. But since it looks like that's the consensus of the board, we will table this item actually, and we'll bring it back April fifteenth. But since it looks like that's the consensus of the board, we will table this item actually, and we'll bring it back April fifteenth.
Now, I do have a, I'm sorry, I do have a request. Can it be brought back by the actual liaison? Um, can you bring it back to the board? And then my other question I would like to know is whether any grants were written before when they were appointed?
Um, not to my knowledge, no.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Marley.
Yes, ma'am.
I think what, I, I think what, um, Dr. McCray and Mayor Timmer saying that, uh, you have to be a commission to get the CLG status, I think she was asking when they were a commission, before they were decommissioned, if they actually pursue any of those type of grants, and I'm not aware.
But they were not, uh, they were not certified. They were just a commission?
You can get grant funding. Um, the CLG is a type of grant funding. It's not the only type of, uh, grant funding. You can do, uh, tax credits. That's another actual funding source. Things that makes it, there's a lot of difference. So I want to make sure people understand, CLG is one mechanism to pursue grant funding. You don't have to, you're not pigeonholed to only being able to pursue grant funding through CLG if you wanted to get historical, uh, additional grant funding.
Good information for the April tenth meeting. Mark, you've got, you've got a nice agenda item for your meeting coming up.
I have one other comment, too. Um, I'd also like to see the town reach out to all the business owners and residents that live in the historic district of the town. And so they can be made aware of, uh, what the town's looking at doing and what it could impose on them as far as, like you said, their renovations, exterior renovations, having to, um, apply for a certificate of appropriateness. That, that's, that's a lot on some people that live in that district and, um, the business owners out there. So, um, you know, in the past, I've heard citizens say that we didn't notify, we didn't let them know what the town was doing. Um, so I, I think we need to reach out to the people in that district. Um, you know, if they want to come to the next board meeting and hear the discussion, if they got time, they say, "Come, let us here." Just to be transparent with the citizens and the business owners. So I don't know if that can be done in that time period, but I'd like to see it happen.
But don't confuse a certificate with appropriateness with, like, violation of town ordinances. I think a lot of people get mad. They're like, "Oh, we have this house, and you want us to cut grass, and you want us to, you know, fix the holes, and you want us to paint it because it looks bad." That's not bad. That's just reinforcement of town codes or town ordinances.
Right.
When you issue a certificate of appropriateness, it's like, okay, does this, what you're going to do, like what I do with my spring porch, is this going to fit in with the architectural style of the home? Is it going to follow through? I mean, you have to be real careful about that, but no, I mean, we don't have the power to go step on somebody's toes and say, "You've got to paint your house gray, and it has to have white trim." And, you know, no, that's, no, we don't have that kind of power. But we do have, would have, and it could work together with the town. That's some old thing. It's like, we're not in opposition to what the town wants to do. And how many times have you heard people say, "Oh, all those houses out there, and they're drug houses, and they look so bad," and everything? And we can work together with the town to improve the quality of those buildings and improve that neighborhood. That's my goal, anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. I would like to add one other thing, that years ago, we had the Veterans Affairs Commission. It's a committee today. But years ago, it was a commission. And while it was a commission, it raised all the money to put that Veterans Park monument that's out there today, that, that is visited every year, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and throughout the year. But it was a commission because that is what gave that Veterans Affairs Commission the opportunity to raise money, and they did it, because it's out there. It's a testament that monument is out there. But that's what they, that's what they did as, as a commission. Okay. So, next item is, um, Veterans Affairs, in fact, it is the next item, Veterans Affairs Committee, uh, committee member removal, and that will belong to Commissioner Swallow.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just for some clarifications, because I know it says to remove committee members. It's not, it's the removal of the ones that we, myself and the, um, chairperson have tried to reach out to numerous times. Um, we've gotten no answer to any of them as far as whether they were staying. Then we had the, um, the amendment for that people didn't have to redo the, um, uh, applications. So we never got any feedback from some of these. So, um, the, the persons that, um, haven't attended or we have received no contact from is Adrian Madison, Denise Melton, and Jim Morris. He had said he was resigning, but we never got an official notice. So these are those, those personnel that, um, we just need to remove. This is just, the industry doesn't want them anymore. So I would like to make the motion to remove those three personnel from the Veterans Affairs.
Motion for management. Motion for management. Second, prestate the three names for the record.
Adrian Madison, Denise Melton, and Jim Morris.
Okay. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Next item is closed session.
Do you want me to do the update on the social media account?
Yep, you're right. Next item, social media, Supreme Court ruling.
All right. Um, so this is not new territory for County Hope Mills. We've had discussions about Facebook for years, but, uh, the Supreme Court on March fifteenth finally did give some clarity as to what the rules are for, um, government actors and, uh, social media. And I think that the case is Lindke v. Freed, if you want to look it up. It came out March fifteenth, uh, written by Amy Conrad Barrett. Um, essentially, I'll just give you the bottom line of what they said, which is that you, you are only acting, so they really analyzed, are you acting as a private citizen or as a state actor? And as the Supreme Court does, they didn't give a real clear, concise, easily defined definition. Uh, they gave sort of broad category. The case arose out of a town manager who had a Facebook account for years, uh, operated it, posted pictures of his family, all that stuff on it, became town manager, started posting information about the town. A citizen, uh, was posting on his Facebook page things that he didn't like, and he ended up deleting some of the accounts, deleting some of the comments and blocking him from the account. Um, so the Supreme Court was really analyzing, was he acting as a state actor or was he acting as a private citizen? Because the First Amendment applies if you're acting as a state actor. It does not apply if you're acting as a private citizen. Um, so they basically said, it's hard to tell sometimes. So what they, they came up with a two-part test. Um, and the test is, one, um, are you, do you possess actual authority to speak on the, the state's behalf, which here would be on the town's behalf? So are you, do you possess actual authority to speak on the town's behalf? And two, are you purporting to exercise that authority when you speak on social media? And that's the test. So, you know, for what is worse test, that's what the test is. It's a little hard to put that into action. Uh, they gave some examples in the case. For example, if you're making an official announcement, um, you know, the town would like to announce ABC, that is more likely to be, uh, state action. If you are sharing information that has previously been shared by the town, it's less likely to be state action. Um, the Supreme Court suggested that one way to clarify your account is to say in, in your, uh, account that this is a personal account. These review, these views are my own. They do not reflect the views of the town. They're my personal views. If you put a disclaimer like that on your account, it is much more likely to be treated as a private account than a state account. Um, but of course, that's not definitive. You can't just put that on there. Uh, it's a case-by-case basis. So essentially, they said if you're, if you're speaking on behalf of the town, and you have authority to do that, or you're purporting to speak on the town, you can't delete comments. Uh, you know, that, that creates sort of a public forum on that particular post. Not necessarily on a post if you're posting a picture of your dog and someone, you know, posted a nasty comment on there, you can probably delete it then, because you're not speaking as a state, state actor. Um, but the trickier part comes in blocking, because if you block someone and you have what they sort of refer to as a mixed-use account, where you post some official stuff and some personal stuff, um, that could be a violation because you're blocking someone, uh, from seeing the official stuff. So if you're going to use social media as, as an official account where you're, you know, acting in your capacity as a board member or, or town employees and town manager, if you're acting in your capacity as a employee or agent of the town and you have that authority, um, you know, you should create a separate, you should probably create a separate account for that. If your intent for a social media account is to be a personal account, then you may or may not comment on town business, because one of the, the nice things about this opinion, and the League of Cities has, has said that this is a win for local government, because it gives local government officials and employees, uh, their own First Amendment rights. And it clarifies that, yes, you have the right to comment on town action or town business as a citizen. Um, but you need to clarify that you're doing it as a citizen, not as an official, which is why they suggest, and I would, you know, when the Supreme Court says, "This is a good way to do this. It's probably the way to do it." To include in your account that the views expressed on this account are my own personal views. I'm not speaking as a board member. I'm speaking as a private citizen in this account. That's going to go a long way towards distinguishing state action from personal, uh, comments. Uh, if you do want to have an account where you make official comments, it would be a good idea to have a separate account for that. Um, you know, like a, an official page and a private page. And the official page, you know, you don't block anyone, you don't delete stuff. And your private page, you can block and delete all you want. If you have a private page, like a mixed-use account, kind of, uh, uh, social media account, you can probably delete comments that are, you know, whatever you want to delete, uh, from posts that are clearly personal in nature, uh, and then not necessarily from comments that are more official. And again, the test for what is personal versus official is do you have actual authority to speak on behalf of the town? Uh, and are you purporting to exercise that authority? So that's, that's the rule from the Supreme Court. There, there's going to be a lot of, I think, subsequent opinions that clarify how these rules play out. Um, but this is sort of the, the broad rule from the Supreme Court. This is when you have, uh, First Amendment rights, uh, and when you cannot block people or cannot delete comments. So, um, I would encourage everyone to read the opinion, uh, because it does give some good examples in there and some, some good context of, of what the difference is. And again, it's Lindke v. Freed, L-I-N-D-K-E-V-F-R-E-D-E-B, uh, came out March fifteenth. So I'd encourage everyone to read that.
Thank, thank you. Uh, I just didn't want us to get in a position that we end up having the Supreme Court against us. So, um, so thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to say I have a mixed-use account, and I don't have, I don't desire to have a town account. I had to take it down because of the negative comments that was up there. Uh, but I will put that at the top of my page, but I do not, I'm not going to be pushed to have a private, I mean, a, a separate account. But I do have a mixed account, and I do share information about the town, but I'll be sure to put that up there.
And, and one of the things they did clarify is that if you are sharing information that has previously been shared from like an official account, that is less likely to be considered state action. That is more likely to be considered a personal, you, you commenting as an individual citizen on town events or town action, uh, which you, you have the First Amendment right to do, or it is clarified, uh, while you can still block people or delete comments. But if you are going to have any official comments on there, then blocking is problematic because, um, you know, you're blocking someone from reading a state comment. But again, um, it, it's less likely, particularly as, as individual board members, that your comments on social media are official actions. So that's, that's the general guidelines, but I'm happy to discuss if there's any other questions.
Thank you, Dan. Okay. Now, our next item is to go into closed session.
I would like to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 1433181183, a time, a time client privilege and NCGS 1433181186 person.
Okay. We'll be back momentarily.
The move, move to seal the minute.
Okay. We're good, we're good.
Motion moved to seal the minutes of a closed session to such, to such time, because the information would hold on for frustrating purposes of a closed session. So there are no actions. Thank you.
Second.
Okay.
Make the motion, go, Charlie.
No, not yet. All in favor? None opposed, motion carries. Okay, monthly reports are what's left, uh, primarily the manager's report.
All right. If you look in your manager's report, all right. Um, if you look in your manager's report, manager's report tomorrow, we talked about this a little earlier, um, the pinwheel ceremony. Um, we actually were, um, um, because we were awarded the first minister, the first Minister of Management with the stewardship of children award, um, protection of the place award with the Child Advocacy Center. And we did this ceremony last year, and so tomorrow, the pinwheel ceremony, um, will be tomorrow at twelve noon. So I'm inviting everyone out. Um, we were trying to get the kids to sing again, but it's break, break. And so, um, we weren't able to capture, put some pinwheels across the street in front of, uh, Rockville Elementary with, uh, two classrooms, um, last week. But, um, we're inviting everybody out on tomorrow at twelve noon. The ceremony won't last more than about thirty minutes. I'm doing the, uh, opening remarks. Mayor Breville was just speaking as well. Um, Commissioner A. spoke on this. Opening day is April thirteenth. Um, come on out. Uh, I think last year was amazing, but I thought this year is going to be even bigger than that. Um, Juneteenth, we're doing our inaugural Juneteenth event on June fifteenth. The Dirt Bag Gales event will be from one to ten, ten P.M. Um, also in the manager's report, you'll see an update on town projects in terms of Heritage Park. I did list at the bottom the website link for the project updates. Um, we do have an update from Ingrid on the, um, grants. We actually submitted the fire protection, uh, grant, um, for equipment. We are in the process of actually submitting this week another grant, uh, for police body cameras and equipment through Firehouse Subs. They have a grant. Um, you'll also see, um, an update on, um, from public works and inspections. Um, development projects, we had the ribbon cut, uh, the groundbreaking for Culvers a few weeks ago. That was very, very, um, powerful. Um, myself, uh, Mayor, Commissioner Marley, and Commissioner Swallow was there with the family. The Chamber of Commerce is there as well. Um, that is under construction. Freddy's is under construction. The tire shop is under construction. Um, Caribou Coffee has called, and so has Chipotle. And so we do have a lot of businesses coming to town. And the last, uh, page of the update is the continued NCDOT construction update for railways. That'll stay on the manager's report. That's going to be our next couple of ones. That's it for me.
Are we getting here? How's it going?
I cannot speak publicly on that. Um, there are some, and typically, if you see it in the manager's report or you hear me talking about it, always I have a saying, "It's not real until I see a set of plans." You hear about stuff, I'm, I'm pretty sure a lot of us were, uh, salivating over a tanger out there. Um, I knew that property was going to. I knew the area. I knew what size it was. Never had a set of plans, and then one day I got to working, it disappeared like a ghost. So, yeah, until I see a set of plans for consideration, and we're moving towards a building permit, I use it on those people on the book.
Okay?
Um, could you please follow up about the, um, treason from the fire department as far as the...
Um, actually, fucking, what, this week? Actually, fucking, what, this week?
Last week is coming back this week.
Yes, that happens this week.
I would like to ask the board something. Every, every meeting, excuse me, apologies, just gets my breath. Every meeting, we have the manager's report down at the end of the agenda. And if we go into closed session, by the time we come back, most of the audience is gone. I'd like to move the manager's report up somewhere in the agenda where the manager's report can be briefed while a lot of citizens are actively here. So I would, I propose that maybe we would make it either item three or item two.
I would say after the official comments, that was the reason why we moved those comments. So when we were making announcements about things going on in the town, that there would be people here. So I think if we give our updates and then, now we're made of against it, the public will be.
I, I think that was, I was just whispering to ask the official comments. So you got start official comments, the last official comment would be the manager's report. And you're right, um, that's when you have a full, uh, crowd of people directly on it.
I was going to address this before, but it's, finally, I just looked at tonight and I said, you know, I'm just going to ask the board if, if y'all would consider moving the manager's report up and making that item number three.
Can we make a motion for that?
No, just consensus.
Yeah, just consensus.
Okay, reminders, uh, HPC meeting April tenth, opening day April thirteenth. Our next meeting is April fifteenth. Step comments, whatever steps is left.
Um, I don't have any official comments, but I just wanted to thank all of the commissioners that contributed their time and donations to the dignity closet. It was a really successful event and we look forward to hosting it again.
It was. It was.
I have people already wanting to donate more. They contacted me today and I was like, we have to wait.
And actually, all the remaining products that was left, they, all that went to the Goodwill.
Um, they're actually picking up the clothing tomorrow and then, um, the toiletries went to various other organizations, um, in the community.
Very, very good. So it, it was moved forward to help someone that wasn't here for the event, okay?
One more thing. I was asking, are we moving the arts and culture, the first meeting next Thursday? Or the, um, because it, uh, the arts and culture meeting is supposed to be the second Thursday of the month. And we do have enough for the meeting, so should we announce that? Should we let, let the, um, members know or should we wait until May? Just tell me how you always want, when you want to do that.
Um, I'd say it's up to the, the, the council. I wasn't sure, I wasn't aware that it needed to be moved for any reason.
No, we, we've never had a meeting and we have enough people.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
Oh, so you're saying it's fully formed now, that we need to go ahead and proceed with the date that it's typically set for, which is the second.
Obviously, they're going to do it.
Yeah.
No.
Yeah, I can, I can notice that tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
I want to do it. Mr. Brev?
Um, I've had some calls about the community yard sale. So I looked it up and that's going to be held Saturday, April the twenty seventh for the rain date, but Sunday, April twenty eighth, from nine A M. to one P M. It's, uh, the cost is five dollars. Uh, registration is required no later than April the nineteenth.
To get on the map, to get on the community map, and this is a big event too. All right, before we go, commissioners, at our next meeting, April fifteenth, we will have, actually, we will have committee reports from all the commissioners. Make sure that you hit your committees, multiple committees, if you like, appearance committee, and, um, you know your committees. So on April fifteenth, we'll have a briefing from all the committee, committee reports. Anything else before we go? Motion adjourned? Second? All in favor? We are adjourned.